Commissioners Board Work Session. It is Wednesday, October 5th, 2022. It is 1:36 PM. It wasn't set to go until 4:15 PM today. This is a hybrid meeting. We're in Building 1, Room 280. Republic Virtual Attendants, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina McHea. I'm the Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Tom Mansour. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards. Also in the boardroom, we have County Manager Romero Chavez, as well as Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, as well as the Budget Team. And we also have our Community Planning and Economic Development Team here today. And we are continuing from this morning our budget presentations. So, who am I having?
Thank you. Yep. Thank you, Commissioner. So, as stated, we are continuing work sessions on the budget that will go on through Friday. This afternoon, you'll be hearing from two of your departments. First up is Community Planning and Economic Development. We've got the CPED team here with us. Specifically, we're going to look at the Land Use and Permits Fund, the Fair Fund, talk a bit about the Abatement Fund, and the Permit System Replacement. You had a few questions on those, so we're going to target the conversation to those four things. But if you have questions about other items in the budget from CPED, you are free to chat with Josh about them now. You have 45 minutes for this session. We'll take a 15-minute break, and then at 2:30, you'll be joined by Public Health to talk about some of the public health issues. We're going to try to wrap up. The schedule has us wrapping up by 3:30, but there's a little bit of room there. Some members of this group have other appointments this afternoon, so we will absolutely try to wrap up by 4:00. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Josh and ask you to start about the Land Use and Permit Fund.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to have this dialogue with you about the different items that we've got to present with our budget. Before we get started, I want to introduce Summer Miller. Summer is our new Fiscal Manager, joined us about three months ago. Thank you. Yeah, applause are nice. And the next is Summer is Brett Burris. Brett Burris is our Manager for Development Services in CPED. And so, for Brett as well. And so, we've been really appreciative of Brett's work the past couple of years in terms of culture change and process improvements within the 4124 Land Use Fund. And also, with the work that Summer's done in the past few months, has been in partnership with the Budget Office, highlighted a real big miss. And I want to just own it right off the bat, because I think that, as the Director, it's my responsibility to make sure that the information that we're providing the Budget Office, and therefore the Commissioners, is on point. Past few years, we overcorrected. So, '27 and '28, we underprojected our revenue. We then overcorrected our projections in '19 and '20, leading into where we are now. Ongoing, we kept those high projections and provided those to the Budget Office for review. We've all had a lot of staff turnover. We've all had COVID that we've been faced with. But Summer's good work in the Budget Office, the Budget Team that we have now, has highlighted this deficiency that we have in terms of a projection for 4124. And there's some reasons for that. We can get into as much detail as you like. But essentially, it's four main things. The first one is, we overprojected. The revenue and our expenditures stayed the same. So, we're going to be potentially in a deficit of around $700,000. That's the amount that we worked out with the Budget Office if we stay on the current course. The second reason, over the past few years, I've come to you, to the Board, with a number of successes in reducing the number of permits that we charge for at the counter. So, we no longer have permits for solar panels, for doors, for windows, for siding. We increased the permits of the square footage from 200 to 400 square feet. All of those successes and help to citizens reduced the revenue to CPED. Then more recently, we also have been working through Brett's Project Review Timeline, which we've engaged with the Board on a number of occasions, to reduce that back and forth, the "bring me another rock" scenario. That back and forth, we do, we charge an hourly rate for that back and forth. And so, as we've reduced the back and forth, we've also reduced the hourly rate that we're charging for that back and forth. And so, there's this difficulty that comes with these successes. We talked about this in the past. The hard thing is, the difference between the revenue and the expenditures came quicker than we were expecting because we overprojected. And so, now we're in a position where we're requesting the $700,000 one time to get us over this hurdle, to close the gap, so we don't end the year negative, and let the process improvements play out in the coming year, as well as a conversation, I think, potentially on the 100% cost recovery and the fee rate study that Assistant County Manager Campbell has been suggesting for a number of years. We have that RFP in play. We're working on having that set and have information back for the coming budget cycle. But there's a lot of timing issues. And that $700,000 gap is a big issue that we wanted to come, provide my sincere, direct ownership of that overprojection, and request your support.
Can you bring the financial plan?
Yep.
Did I miss anything, Robin?
So, you know, I think you hit it all. The financial plan is in your packet. It is Fund Number 4124. It's titled Development Services. There is a new copy.
You need to follow electronically. It's on today's folder.
So, is it in the electronic packet? All right. So, this is the fund.
Okay. First thing I have here.
4124.
It's 12.
It's 12, mhm. Josh, can you repeat those? You said doors, like things you're not asking for permits for. You rattled out like four things. Can you repeat that?
Well, there's a bunch more, but the highlights are, we don't have a permit that we charge for solar panels, windows, doors, and siding. And then the other big one is the increase from the 200 square foot to 400 square foot.
Except.
Except. We used to charge a permit for any building that was more than 200 square feet. We increased that to 400 square feet. So, if you're building a building for 400 square feet, you don't have to get a permit. 401, you get a permit.
It used to be 201.
It used to be 200. Yep. 201. Thanks.
Okay. Are we gonna... Were we still talking about the 700,000?
I...
I don't... Probably go move on to a different topic. Yeah, I have questions on that, so.
On the 700?
Yes. Yeah. So, now's the time to talk about this fund.
Okay. I guess, my view of that, first of all, on a one-time expenditure, to set things straight, what funds do we have available that could make that work? Oftentimes, we don't like taking money out of, say, current expense for one time, because it's going to be ongoing. This is truly one time, it sounds like to me. So, do you have an idea on a funding source, whether it be ARPA money or other one-time funds of any type?
So, this is intentional to shore up a restricted fund. The only viable source you can take this money from in the county is general fund. What we're trying to find a way to do is free up some general fund with some ARPA money. And that's the... It's the scenario, I'm going to call it a scenario, that we talked about on Monday, where we're looking at ARPA. There's this ability to charge X many FTEs to ARPA that would free up general fund. We don't know yet how many FTEs that is. We don't know what the value of that is yet. But what Romero and I were talking to you about is if we use some of the ARPA money that way, we could free up some general fund, and you could use it for one-time things like this. But the other alternative is general fund money. There is no other fund that it can come from.
Just straight up, okay.
Yep.
My position on this is, all the things laid out by the Director were benefits to our community. Every one of them. Now, the fact that it didn't get captured in follow-up review, I guess, that's too bad. But we've had, we've had other offices that have done much worse over the years, since I've been here, in the last six years. So, I don't look at, I just look at this as oversight, and the public got to benefit from every one of those changes that we implemented as a board. So, I'm all for making the situation come out right, but I don't know how, that's kind of in your building, about how to make that fit. I'm not going to attempt to try and make a run at that. But I just, I'm pretty satisfied.
You're not voting on anything today?
No, no. I'm just saying, I'm satisfied that, yeah, maybe some mistakes were made, but that's the way life is sometimes.
So, I am going to ask you to look into the future years, though.
That was my thing. My question was going to be, because it looks like this won't just be a one-time funding kind of situation, but an ongoing cost.
Have a huge...
Because just next year, it looks like we're going to be in the red again by 1.9 million, and it's just going to keep growing in 2024, 2025, and 2026. And so, that was going to be, because the 708 is just going to kind of scrape you by into the next year, into the next year. So, I'm wondering what the plan is for 2023 onward.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And so, I lightly touched on it, but thank you for the question. So, the first thing, first thing, let me say, you have our commitment, especially with Summer and the new Budget Team that we've got in play here, to not have this happen again. You will not be surprised in this way with this gap. Summer is looking at the cash on hand every day that's coming in, the way the permit process works, so we have some actions underway. First off, we have a freeze on spending. So, expenditures for the 4124, we're not spending anymore right now on training, any of those items, trying to get that under control. Second, we're holding open the newly vacated positions. Oh, sorry to jump.
Can I jump in real quick? You said you have a freeze on spending, but yet, there's some budget requests that are from this fund specifically. And let me...
Yeah, it's for the new building, for the...
For the atrium. So, how does that kind of play into kind of this? And is, are those requests budgeted already into this, or it's going to be even more of a...
This includes any budget requests in 2023?
So, it's already included on there. Okay. Thank you. Sorry for interrupting.
No, that's okay. Did you get the answer?
Yes.
Okay. We're scrubbing our internal rates, the expenditures. 4124 has been, we're not sure if 4124 has taken more than its fair share of expenditures, so we're scrubbing those rates internally as well. And then, we are working internally to identify potentially other funding, viable funding sources. So, some of the work that our Permit Planner do may go into areas that could be accessed in other funds. But those are some actions that we're taking underway. A second big action is, the way that the permit receipts work is applicant comes in, they apply for a land use application. And Brett, stop me if I get this wrong, okay? They apply for a land use application, and the land use is about whether or not you can use the land. And once they get that application complete, then they go forward on a building application. And so, you have this long outlay between the first land use application, where we receive the money, and then the potential turnaround on the big portion of the building application. And so, we've got, right now, I think we have 4,000 applications with how many single-family residents kind of sitting out there?
Approximately 300 to 400.
So, 300 to 400, that's the backlog we've been talking about. And we've reduced that by about 110 already over the past couple of months. But that money doesn't materialize until the end of the building process. So, this outlay, it could be potentially between six months or two years, depending upon how quickly we're able to process those permits. When we start to process those permits in a quicker fashion, that money will come in, the outlay will be less, right? And so, we'll be able to keep track of how much we're spending versus the revenue in a more precise way. So, that's the one big thing that we're doing. We've got this outlay. It's hard to project, because we're not sure when those funds are coming in, because our processes need to be better. The second thing is the 100% cost recovery. And we've talked about that on numerous occasions. We've engaged with the business community and others locally. We, in Thurston County, are the last major jurisdiction that they're aware of that had the holdover from the Great Recession of the 100% cost recovery. Lacey, Olympia, Pierce, all the rest of these surrounding jurisdictions don't still have this 100% cost recovery model. We have not done a holistic review of our fees since 2009. And so, that then leads to the third item, is the fee study that's underway, that Robin's been talking about for years. And I've been trying to get this through, but so many other things have happened. Those are big conversations that the Board needs to have in the coming year, that are going to directly impact the reality of this projection. And so, what we didn't want to do, we wanted to make this as as close to real as possible right now with the information that we have. But the goal is that we have some of those big conversations in the new year that the Board will have to wrestle with, that will impact this projection. Did I get the three main things there, Robin?
I... Yes. Those are the things that you've talked to Romero and I about.
Well, that we've discussed together.
Yep.
Is that somewhat helpful?
I'm sure, Mr. Yes.
I mean, I understand everything you're saying. I just see, like, the B study, and we're the only 100% cost recovery, and the public wants fees reduced. But yet, we're short of all, even where we are now. So, I'm just, it's like, it's like, the two things are going in the opposite direction. And what is left behind? A massive general fund subsidy to this program? I mean, let's just talk about the elephant in the room. I mean, that's what I'm hearing. I don't hear any solution. You and I have been going out to the community. You sat with me down in South County, and we used the fee study as, you know, I mean, a defense. It was reasonable. It was the thing. It's like, you're worried about fees, so are we. We're investing in a fee study. We're doing all that. Kudos to us. But what's the result of that going to be? It's going to tell us that our fees are too low, or else we wouldn't have a $700,000 gap. But yet, everybody wants fees to be too, say, your fees are too high. So, how are we closing that logical disconnect? I don't see a couple of million dollars sitting in the general fund to close this gap and start subsidizing people's building permits. Maybe I'm missing it, but...
Go ahead.
I think the elephant in the room is a lot bigger. We've got a $10 million move down to the atrium. Where's all that covering coming from? We've got a $5 million purchase over at Montman. $100,000 potential remodel. Now, it's a $10 million remodel. So, it isn't like there aren't mistakes made along the way. And we've got a rainy day fund with $3 million. And we've got some one-time money. So, is it perfect? No, but I do see that we can keep functioning. That's all, without placing blame in any one category, on a very complicated total, if you take the total system that we participate in. I'm, I would just assume this isn't the way it was, but it is the way.
No, I think you're misinterpreting. I'm not blaming anyone. I agree with everything you said, and then I agree, like, going backwards, everything you said is right. Going forwards, everything Commissioner McHea said is right. Like, you're both right. I'm just wondering, how are we gonna, I'm just trying to think for the head of the future. What are we, when the fee study comes back and says, okay, well, in order to, if you're going to stick with 100% cost recovery, you're going to need an extra. Fees are going to have to go up, because right now, we've got a gap. You know, maybe some fees go down, some fees go up. I mean, I'm hoping that there'll be some fine tuning that makes this whole system better. But ultimately, there's going to have to be more revenue. And, but that's not what... And then, if we decide that, well, we're out of line to do 100% cost recovery, we're the only ones doing it, and we've got, and so now, we've taken that gap of 700,000 over a very much time, and we've increased it, because we're going to subsidize it. Now, we've got even a bigger gap to fill with other sources of funds. So, I'm just thinking out loud. I don't mean to be criticizing anyone. I don't think anyone's done anything wrong. I think that everything Commissioner Edwards said is right. I'm just trying to figure out, like, how are we going to get to the equilibrium?
I got an answer.
And it's not about not, the answer, I hope the answer is not, don't provide, like, office space for employees to work, based on space that's like literally 50 years old.
No, I got a good answer.
Okay, better answer.
Yeah.
No. My answer would be that we take this as an opportunity, and we take a look at where we can save substantial money, and save it specifically in, over at planning. And here's how. We take and farm out major projects, so that our staff are not working on major projects. Our staff are overseeing for the citizen. Major projects will pay their own way, whether that's a development for a housing, or a business park, or whatever. You go to the EDC, I hear it all the time, at EDC, at the Chamber. How come we don't do that? How come we don't let developers foot the bill for their project? Hire their individual. That way, we have planning, handling all that stuff for the individual, or things for the county that we're moving forward on, that require, go through planning. The individual that tries to build his house after he's saved a lot of money and retired, he didn't know the process. It's a headache to him. Let's help them through that process, and let the developer of a business park, or a housing development, or whatever it is, let them foot the bill for that development process. We don't have to have our staff tied up on that. And we can turn this around.
One of the things I have heard is that we are, in terms of what we charge, big projects, that Commissioner Edwards is talking about, that we are one of the counties that charges the least amount in terms of that. I was hearing in Stahomish, they have that model, Commissioner Edwards, but the charge for that is, I don't remember the exact figure of it. And Josh, I know I spoke to you about it, but do you remember how much it was?
I don't, but that's exactly what the fee study would be, would assess.
Yeah.
Is it's the amount and the process. Is there a better way to do what we're doing? That, so it's not just about raising the cost. It's also about thinking holistically how we operate.
So, it's not completely naive to think that the B study may show us that there's a pathway that wouldn't raise fees on small projects and still pencil out our budget, maybe because big projects aren't paying enough, or something like that. I mean, just theoretically.
I will say theoretically.
Because, I mean, I've been hoping that this study is going to really illuminate a path forward that we all like, you know, a good path forward. But I'm just worried, you know, but that was before I knew that we were already at the status quo, down 700K. That's reduced my confidence level that this study is going to yield a path forward that we're all happy. I guess it's kind of... I guess that's kind of best way to describe what I'm.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and, and I hope the board, it's just my perspective, if the board doesn't take this, fee study is the solution to this. Because it's not, it's not gonna give you the tangibles that you're looking for. And the, the fee study also is gonna tell you, because we're gonna go through a comparable market analysis with other jurisdictions, your jurisdiction subsidizes some of the applications through the general fund. That is another piece that will be seen. I'd like to go back to Commissioner Edwards' proponents. I, I think what, what your opponent absolutely is gonna perhaps expedite the, the permitting process by developers funding portions of that, get it? But even that is not gonna resolve the issue, because what you see on the, geez, I can't find it. On the, on the major gaps that we have in here is salaries. So, and the salaries that we have scheduled for next year is two point two million dollars purely salaries. Your approach certainly can expedite the, the delivery of a permit. But we're still gonna have the issue, because we have a number of employees in here that we pay salaries. And that continues to be an issue. Because the professional services that you are, are suggesting are not gonna be supplementing the salaries that we have in here.
Well, it's also internal services, I mean, and looking at internal services, it's more than doubled over these, since two thousand seventeen, while the salaries have remained pretty consistent across the board. The big, the big jump in two thousand nineteen was when we started doing internal service collections for large system replacement projects. The big jump that you see coming in two thousand twenty-three is impart the move to the atrium. So that is.
Internal rates for all of the services there goes up.
Yes, square footage.
That's right, yeah, square footage.
Office space.
Those, those are the big pieces. We can break it down and tell you what else is in, about it in the internal service rates, but those are the big drivers.
I, I would say, just to piggyback on that, when I did say scrubbing the internal rate expenditures, that's exactly the line that we're looking at. Is all of that gonna be forty-one twenty-four, how much is it also community planning, water resources, the other groups too, so that's one of the rates that we're looking at.
And review the cost allocation methods that they're using.
Perhaps it's gonna be a reduction, because I'm gonna be meeting, bridging the gap. I mean, this be, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's not gonna be enough to make up two million dollars.
Yeah, none of these are silver bullets, it's a little bit of everything.
So, next year, we're gonna be monitoring this very, very closely. We may be back in front of you to, to request for more funding to fill the gap again. When is the fee study due to be completed?
Goes out to RFP, it's out on RFP now, we're hoping to have it vendor selected by the end of this month, and with a request on the RFP that it's ready by, was it February, March? Somewhere there.
That's a pretty quick turnaround.
I think we said three to four months. If Jeremy was here, he'd be able to.
So you'll have the information get through next year.
My suggestion, Robin and I, we're gonna be finding, hopefully, a way to give additional capacity for one time. And through the ARPA funds, so that is the, the, the gist of my this conversation. The objective is to give the board capacity to, to deal with the, these issues. But if there is enough capacity for you to consider, my suggestion for you will be to include additional injection of funds for two thousand and twenty-three.
Yeah.
Because the fee study is not gonna be completed mid-year of next year. So that will give you enough time for, for you to assess the fee study, and start making budget determinations at the upcoming biennium. You keep right on point. This is just two thousand and twenty-two patchwork. I think the board may consider something else if there is enough capacity on the one-time revenue to shore up in two thousand and twenty-three.
Are you sure of how much?
We, 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 I cannot suggest a number.
An additional million, I can suggest a number.
Yeah, but we have to see whether the, the, the capacity, we're gonna be, additional capacity will be provided to you. And that will be my suggestion.
So then the request would be seven hundred and eight thousand for twenty twenty-two, and then for twenty twenty-three would be a million?
I would put in another million at this point in time. One of the things that, you know, is not reflected in this financial plan is there's probably going to be some amount of reversion. I mean, look at the staff costs, they went down in two thousand twenty-two. So we haven't factored in a reversion, like, see in the general fund, I automatically assume three percent. I don't know what that magic number is for this fund, but we'll look at that. We'll be monitoring regularly. If this were a different officer department, I might be talking to you about a hard freeze on hiring. But that will not help this department, in fact, it would hurt. Because you need the people at the counter to be doing these reviews to bring the revenue in.
Absolutely.
So to, to reduce staff whatsoever in this department would just make your revenue picture worse.
Yeah, because it will be counterintuitive, because as Commissioner Edwards has stated, you know, the, the actions that you have taken to reduce and provides benefit to the, to the, to the residents of Thurston County.
Right.
It will not be fruitful to freeze or reduce the staff, I think the board needs to find a way.
It would just make the backlog worse.
We'll, 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 Robin and I will work hard to give you options.
Yep.
Tell, tell me where the fifty million dollars fits. You know, we're gonna do some work on the cordials here.
That is, that is.
Is it locked in? Is it the only thing we can be using that for?
Yeah, because that's for building improvements of the bond, and the revenue to pay for the bond is REIT one. The improvements, tenant improvements at the atrium also are paid for by REIT one. And REIT one cannot be used for this fund.
When you issue bonds, you, you pledge the repayment source, and that goes into.
That's correct.
Well, we, we sold the bonds.
But that's an embedded condition.
It, it is embedded, but if you don't have the capability to meet your commitment on, with that payment source, then you are obligated to go to general fund, I think, to pay it off, so.
I'm pretty confident, though, that REIT one is going to be sufficient. And then there's, when we talk about REIT, I'll talk to you about another little obscure rule in state law. I am not concerned whatsoever that we will have to tap general fund money to pay for our bond payments. But even if we didn't have that bond, even if we hadn't committed that money at a REIT one, you cannot use REIT to pay for land use and permit services. It, it's not an option, it's a restricted fund. And there really are no other restricted funds in the county that can be used for this purpose. So, even if we weren't going to the atrium, even if we were remodeling this courthouse, even if we never bought Motman, you, you could not have fixed that, this problem with that money.
Well, the problem was existing all during that period of time incrementally, as we moved along. Anyway, building up, because it isn't like anybody knew this was gonna happen.
So it, it has been growing, and you're right.
Yeah, it's.
And I can listen to this, to you this morning, Houston will have a problem, so it's serious.
Nobody's laying blame, no, no one's laying blame.
No, I think it's.
We saw the issue, we need.
Yeah, and I think we, we, stock is gonna try to give you enough tools to, for you to find a way.
Um, yep.
I'm gonna go buy a lottery ticket tonight.
A billion-dollar lottery?
If I win, I'll help you out.
So, let's move, there's beautiful things.
It's on TV.
So this was the main conversation with CPAD, but they do wanna talk about just a couple other things that you'd ask to hear about. The Fair Fund is the next item in your packet. And if you look at the bottom line, I had said earlier today that we could pull that sixty thousand dollar request, but Josh, you may wanna say a few words about the Fair Fund.
Can you tell us what page?
Page four, thirteen.
Wednesday, or Peter Cole?
Thirteen, oh, thirteen, not total, sorry.
This packet.
The fund number is one zero three zero, Fairgrounds Fund.
Something I might need about page numbers to be honest.
Yeah.
I may be in another one, which I'm not.
It's a.
Can't find it?
Look at.
Me too.
I can't help it, I used to do the same thing, so I, I get it. It's taken me a long time to get to the best.
So perhaps we can just move on from this item, because there's not an issue on Fair Fund?
I can jump in real quick.
Very fast.
Yeah, so sixty thousand dollars, so if you'll remember, we separated the Fair Event and the Fair Grounds. Teresa Reed did a great job at the Fair Event this year. There was money in the Fair Grounds budget that we could have reallocated to the Fair Event, but we lost the, a large portion of the LTAC funds, we had a really tough attendance because of the weather, and we need to readjust the way we do our internal budgeting. That being said, going forward, on the request on page four of ten on this one, you will see, and I think Robin mentioned this, that I will be coming back next year, because there is a, a need, we've reduced staff since two thousand one, we had one, two, three, four, five, six members of staff at the Fairgrounds, today we have two. And we need somebody that can help manage the Fair Events, the Fair Grounds, Teresa Reed is a ten-hour a week employee, has another job somewhere else, so that pitch will happen later, but I think that there is value in that. The sixty thousand dollars, we don't need at this time, thank you for the support from the Budget Office, I was appreciating.
There is one other fair issue, and I think it was like for two thousand dollars, WSU.
Well, that's WSU.
And I have to say that, I, I was right when I said that would affect our four-H kids.
It is, so I, I called Steven Ranwell, and I spoke with him because I, I had questions about it. And he said, the impact would be to the four-H budget of not funding the change request. And it would reduce club activity, and they said we have no other budget source for the state mandated mass salary increase.
There you go. So that's the fair, then just the next fund, one three nine oh, it should be the very next one in your packet. We just wanted to, there's zero unended prior years, because this is a brand-new fund. The board allocated a hundred thousand, which we transferred into the fund this year. And the eighty-two thousand includes the amount if they were to pay for the Grand Mound abatement.
The Grand Mound abatement is at the Rick Peters, I believe it is, yes?
Yeah, so.
Oh, okay, thank you for verifying that, because I don't think we spent eighty-two thousand dollars in.
Oh, no, no, we don't, we don't, that would be this expense. So if, if the county is on the hook, we could cover that expense.
I'm just curious, if that expense should be moved to twenty twenty-three?
We could move it, that'd be fine.
Because there is a, a new strategy that we're working with Rick Peters. And it's gonna take time to get to that point, so it will be two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, but we could put it in whichever year, it doesn't matter. But the, the point is, once that money's spent, it's gone, and we have no idea when we would get revenue. So if the next thing comes up, we'll be asking the board to transfer more money into.
Does this have anything to do with LP Brown?
This is that same fund that would be used if there was a property that needed to be abated. LP Brown was one of those, but we worked out an ILA with Olympia School District to have Olympia School District, once it's condemned, so the county is condemning it, once that court order is complete, then OSD will take the property at the value. And so this fund will not be hit by that property value. And that's, that was, has been the intent, is to be creative, have this as a backstop, but be creative when we needed to be, so.
All the legal work is just part of the prosecuting attorney's budget.
That's a good part, yeah, which is paid for from CPAD for this work.
It, it's part of the indirect.
Yeah.
Right, simple division, right, prosecutors.
And then the last item we had on the list for CPAD was the permit system replacement. And the reason that's here.
Robin and I had a couple other questions, I had that one too.
Sure.
There was the PIO change request that a commissioner had asked about, the breakout room equipment.
Okay, go ahead.
Do we wanna talk about those commissioner questions?
You can say, fine time, quickly.
Okay. So the breakout, we have one television that we're gonna move over to the atrium, we have three full conference rooms that we could have conference calls, teleconference meetings, that kind of thing, we only have one television. This request is to refurbish one other room to have the right equipment, so that's what that request is from Jeremy, looking around the corner to make sure that we've got enough equipment.
From the permit fee fund.
That is, yeah, that's what, that's what.
I just went a line, I just went a line that conversation.
And it could be, that's a good point, because it would be used by all of CPAD. So we put it in forty-one twenty-four, again, some are coming on board, found the forty-one twenty-four problem after we made these change requests.
And it's built into the expenditures.
As it currently stands. And then the last one was the PIO change request, that's one of the places where we said we would need to look at allocations for forty-one twenty-four. Our Public Information Officer is doing, we believe, may have the capacity to do work for other funds other than forty-one twenty-four. So this is just a shifting to alleviate some of the cost for the land use fund using our PIO. So that was the only other kind of surrounding questions.
I, I do have one question on your PIO, is there any reason that we can't consolidate our PIO activities?
That's a conversation with the commissioners in the board.
Consolidate countywide?
Yeah, well, at least amongst us, we got PIO here and PIO across the hall. Doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, so.
It's interesting that you, you asked that question. And in fact, I was working with Megan on initiative to see how we can centralize the PIO.
Okay, so you got a plan?
I'm working on that.
For next biennial.
For next biennial, not for this one.
That's fine, okay, just along the lines of anything.
Brian is smiling because he knows exactly what I'm talking about.
So wasn't there something in here that was like, a PIO, that was just more like, sounded like administrative, you know, where they were applying it to one, but then there was another education and outreach.
That's part of it, I thought.
No, it was a separate line, I don't remember.
That's what they, it's, surface, is stormwater?
That could be, could be helpful to know what the item is, I think I'm prepared for that one, Commissioner Metzer.
Okay, let me find it, you did it this morning.
Yep, it's line fifty-seven and fifty-eight on, at the bottom of page seven, and for, for CPAD, it is a request M thirty-six oh two.
Yep, fifteen thousand dollars.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
Community planning funding for education outreach for Growth Management Act proposals, projects. And I was just confused as to how does this plan, if you've got your own PIO, what is this, what are they doing, what is this person doing? Do we need them both, can we afford them both, et cetera, and we ran out of time this morning, that's where we ended.
I'll need more from time to look at that question.
Okay.
Great.
All right.
Yes.
Thanks, it's true.
But that's, and that's coming, I'm seeing from the storm and surface water utility too.
Yeah.
Into.
It would be out of the storm water fund and into the general fund, increasing the cost of the general fund.
It may, it may not be two positions, it will be single position funded by different funds.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just.
There's, there's two different positions, this one down there and this one up here.
No, they wouldn't speak to.
Do we have a PIO over in solid waste?
All right.
We're gonna take a short break.
Solid waste, we have, actually, we have a team of educators.
And you're, and you're.
PIOs. I'll watch on, online tonight. I mean, I just wanna try and consolidate as much stuff as I could, that's all, that's why I'm. Part of the plan?
Part of the plan.
So.
Among the many other plans that are coming my mind.
Let's go ahead and take a ten-minute break. I've got ideas. You're supposed to do that when you say that.
That's it.
Break, it is two thirty-three PM. Commissioner Minzer has been excused for the rest of this session. Um, and so we are back and we have quite a few at Public Health as well as Public Works, and we're gonna pass it on to Robin to see what we're gonna discuss next.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, so this afternoon, for the rest of the um, day, we're gonna wrap up the conversation with CPED. And um, Josh has been joined um, by Scott Lindblom from Public Works and Kurt Harden from Public Health uh, for a short discussion about the permit system replacement project, because that system supports all three of your departments represented here, CPED, Public Health, and Public Works. Um, and then we'll transition into a discussion with Kurt about um, items under the Public Health request, uh, including a position that Public Health is requesting to support their work in the system. Then foundational Public Health, uh, look at the housing fund, uh, look at the uh, request for positions from Public Health, uh, look at the treatment sales tax fund and the veterans fund. And again, we're gonna try to wrap up by no later than four, so let's go.
So which number are we going to add?
Um, the, the, I'm gonna ask these.
The Amanda system, the replacement of Amanda.
Three, to talk about the replacement of the Amanda system. And it's not a, a budget request necessarily, other than Public Health. Their request is um, uh, on line sixty-four of the policy requests. M forty-fourteen is to request for an FTE in Public Health for a business applications analyst to support the system. And the question that the board asked is, um, why can't the position in CPED support all of the, um, the system needs?
And why at full time, let's go to a project.
Right, why full time, not part time, yep, all that.
Okay.
All right, so take it away.
Goodie, so here's what I know about the replacement. We've got the, what was, the current permit database system is called Amanda. We have shortened that to make it less anthropomorphic and be more uh, direct on what the permit system does, A six. It's the sixth version of Amanda from a vendor that we have in place now for more than a decade. That system has become over customized. We worked with the board over the past four years to receive funding to update that system and to find a new technology that would be more in line with current technology in at least the two thousand teens, if not the twenty twenties. Uh, we went through a vendor selection, so the board funded that. They funded the major portion uh, in CPED since we worked as the permit kind of backbone. And then we also have received funding in the second year after CPED was funded for Public Health and Public Works proportionally. And so the three of us have been coordinating very well in terms of our process, but also in trying to select the vendor uh, for this new technology and ensuring that it's got the capabilities that we need going forward. Uh, in the year twenty twenty-one, we let the RFP out, and we selected a vendor in March of twenty twenty-two of this year. IT has taken the lead in the contract discussions with the selected vendor. Those conversations in terms of contracts have been ongoing since March, so we've been in kind of a nine month holding period uh, before we've been able to take those next steps into implementation. And so that's where we are right now. A lot of that conversation has been based on who does what in terms of um, customization. So when we have a new permit, when we have a new process, is it us internally, the staff here at the county that's gonna do the adjustment to the, the database uh, in the way that the process works, or is it the vendor? And that conversation has been ongoing with IT. From what I understand, the three departments that are more policy oriented have been in the um, support role to IT as they've led that conversation, because it's outside of our, you know, the technical experience with IT and the way that these contracts work. So we're reliant uh, very deeply on IT to take those next steps. Part of that is a discussion on timing. Once we get this permit database system up and running, the goal was to have it at least started in twenty twenty-three uh, and begin some of those self-service topics that we've talked about in the past with applicants. The way the contracting is working, doesn't look like that's going to occur this year, or excuse me, into twenty twenty-three. Hopefully, we'll have these technical difficulties worked out with the contract as soon as possible. That's what we know at this time. We are updating our processes internally and coordinating, I think, very well between the three departments. There are some uh, challenges in terms of the way that our building code operates and the sanitary code from Public Health, but Brett Burris and Steve Peterson have been working hand and glove to make sure that we work to address those process issues. And it's really important to make sure that our processes are as clean as possible and efficient, so that what we put in whatever new database system we have is not essentially putting old, um, outdated process, the back and forth, into a brand new shiny system. So there is a value in this time to be able to make sure that our processes are efficient. That's what I don't. Anything other departments?
I'll listen to the county manager first.
Just additional perspective, emphasizing the coordination between the three departments have been essential. And even before we issued a request for proposals, um, the system needs analysis, uh, it took a lot of time, but all the three departments, and that was very, very helpful. But all the three departments, and that was very, very helpful to determine what vendor will be the position to provide the services that we need. Essential. There has been some issues with the preferred vendor. And, and meaning in trying to negotiate in terms of the contract has been extremely tasking by IT to get to somewhat of a contract. Fortunately, we have a good second vendor online. So I have asked Dennis that at some point, we cannot just continue in this going around circle with the first vendor and we need to be looking at the second vendor as the, as the next step in the process. And that will be hopefully his last item for him to complete by the end of this month. There's already enough work done on the, on the contract itself. Getting to the second vendor, I think is going to be streamlining the process. Because we cannot just, in my opinion, that's just my perspective, we cannot be held hostage by the first vendor just because we just have to go, we do have options and we're exploring that option as well. So that's my opinion.
Yeah, I was going to dovetail into what the county manager said and what Josh said was, also, we were informed June, maybe the timeframe, I'm trying to remember, but that it was, as we started implementing whatever system, whatever vendor was selected, that there's going to start being a heavier staff load to be able to effect the change. In other words, we were informed that we'd have to have, we're always going to start taking staff hours to start doing this. And that was a little bit of a surprise, at least for me. Because from what I understand, because I was not involved in the process in the beginning. I'll let Josh and Scott speak to whether or not this was a change for them. So because approximately 30% of the processes in A6, Amanda 6, are exclusively Public Health. And then Public Health is also involved in the other 70% to a greater degree for the business processes as well. So it's becoming more of a staff process as well to be able to shift over and help get the new system up and running. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, and if I could add that from the Public Works perspective, the impact on Public Works processes is far less. I know Kurt's group and Josh's group have far more processes than we do. So ours are utility permits, you know, access permits, grading permits, but they've got a host of others that, that we simply don't have. So the impact on their programs is far different than ours. When we look at Public Works, we don't expect to see that need for additional staffing because again, the impact is much, much smaller. And the processes that we use, we can essentially mirror what the Building Department will be using as well.
So that was going to be my question in regards to processes, right? I understand it's three different departments when it comes to permitting. But, you know, with this new implementation of A6, or Amanda 6 version, is there going to be better coordination from the three departments to the public, right? Because usually when people are coming in, and you know, whether they're dealing with Public Works or Public Health, they all think it's community planning and economic development. So is there going to be better coordination on the processes? Is this new version of Amanda going to be able to accomplish that?
The answer to the question is yes. So that's the project review timeline that you've heard about from Brett on a number of occasions. There has been a lot of great work that's already taken place that the customers, the applicants have experienced. They might not know that they've experienced it because, you know, you come in for an application, but you don't always come in for applications over and over again. Folks that are repeat applicants recognize that we've taken the three letters, that we send out three separate letters, and we've reduced that to one to make sure that all the information is on one sheet. We're going to take that next extra step to have the matrix so that there's a very clear delineation in terms of what belongs where. That's all that process that we're talking about. So the coordination in terms of process is, is extensive. But again, there is different things that we can look at. And customers sometimes decide to take things in a different order than we recommend. Maybe they want to do their septic first, which is a completely different code using the sanitary code than the building and land use code. And if that's the case, they're going to get an approval before they've applied for something else. And so there is, there is a piece of this that's owned also by the applicant in terms of feeling that there's some disjointedness. If you walk into the BDC right now, you can see that we have listed on the, the front area there, it's three departments co-located for your convenience. The way it used to be is you'd have to go up to Lilly to get your septic and drinking water stuff. You'd have to drive down to Tilly to get your rideaway and driveway stuff. And you'd come here for the building and land use stuff. So we put all those in one stop shop. It does create confusion because people have to do three different things, but we're saving people that time from going to those different locations. And so this ongoing confusion about who's doing what for when, we're doing what we can internally in our process. And I'd say that working with both of the departments, our managers, like I've said, Brett, Steve Peterson, and Todd have done an amazing job of making sure that we're working for the customers, for the applicants. But it's complicated, and it's lots of different codes and things that we're trying to accomplish at the same time. Like I said previously, we don't want to put in our clunky processes that we're working through now into a new database system. So to answer your question, I know it was long-winded, is yes, we're going to make sure that what we put in the new database isn't confusing like we've had in the past. Is that close?
So my next question is going to be, just with what you've described right now, going back to the business analyst position that's being requested by
Public Health.
Public Health. Why can't one be shared? If it's the same program that everyone's going to be using following the same process, why do we need separate business analysts? And why can't there just be one to help implement this program?
Can I jump in? I'm sorry, Kurt's doing a great job as the Public Health Director, but he hasn't been involved in the history of this. And so I just want to make sure that there's a piece of this that's really important. This is why we, CPED, aren't asking for a business analyst. We used to have each department an embedded IT person. So we had a dedicated CPED employee that just did CPED stuff. Public Health had a dedicated IT employee that just did Public Health stuff. We transitioned to an IT department. And in the process of working through this upgrade, this to the database, the conversation with IT has been, we believe that an internal IT employee should perform some of the same functions as a, you know, not consultant, but as a person that knows the business processes. So we have a current employee within IT that understands the CPED business processes. I'm not, I think that maybe the piece that Public Health might be missing is, I'm not sure that those conversations have been had with IT in terms of the Public Health processes. And those goes back to the sanitary code versus the land use code. So sorry for jumping in, there's a lot of, there's a lot of history here. Yeah, please.
Yeah, because there is a lot of history here. And part of the history is, when we went to a centralized IT department, we were pretty careful to take the, the IT staff that were doing generalized IT functions, and that's what went in to the new IT department. We were very careful to identify those staff that were working on business-specific systems and leave those in the departments and offices. And my, my favorite example is that the Financial Services has a person who works on Munis. And HR has a person who works in Eden. And in my shop, we have a person who not only works on Questica, but does a lot of other budget stuff as well. But the, but the Questica's board is Jennifer, she's not an IT staff. So we left systems specific. That's right. So if, if they were doing things like setting up computers and general, then they went to the IT shop. Not, not the business specific.
But this is business, it's one program.
This is business specific, and we are talking about one program. And is there not the person still in CPED who works with Amanda?
The model you're describing is what CPED does.
That is what you have now.
That's why we're not asking for a business.
So the other piece of history that I'm going to throw out there, since we're talking about history, is what year was it? In 2017? 2017, Public Health came, you would not have known this. Public Health came and asked for their own position to support the Public Health part of Amanda. That position was authorized, and a year later, it, no?
It wasn't a year later, like three months.
It wasn't even a whole year.
It was a quarter later.
The, the department abolished, the position never used it. So you had a position, you gave it up. And like I said, it was not, no, that's right.
And unfortunately, the change request does not have the reason why they decided.
We have no idea why they came in. But, but the, this had been addressed. And then the department decided that it was not needed, so why now?
And, and so the answer is, is that, a couple reasons. Number one, no, I was scratching my phone. The answer is, is one, I, I don't know why that was abolished in 2017, I can't go.
It wouldn't.
But, but the second piece is, is we've been identified, number one, that there's an increase in the workload. Number two is, existing staff are already working full-time in other positions. And what we've talked about amongst our three departments is, this additional increase in workload with the Amanda system will suffice to support the other two departments by allowing IT support that's currently in place for the other two departments because there's so much work for the Public Health Department. And we had new funding come in, foundational Public Health funding, come in specifically dedicated for environmental health. And this is eligible, this foundational Public Health funding is eligible for these activities because this is all environmental health. You're talking about food service, septic systems, drinking water, compliance and septic system monitoring, and professional licensing. So based on all that, this is a full-time position to adequately support this, this new permit system.
But, but CPED already has a position to support the new system. So why do you need to?
The items that Kurt just mentioned are not CPED work. So we don't do food systems. That's a whole completely different situation.
I think all of us can go back in history and, and find to find answers that perhaps we may not be able to. I think the, the conversation today is, we embark in a brand-new system that is going to require a lot of, a lot of work by the departments. Scotland law stated may not be the much of an impact to public work. But certainly, there's going to be an impact to CPED and Public Health. And I think the need is, is rather on that delta, or that they should all work. And I'd like to make a comment that sometimes may not, the decisions may not be based on there is money available. I believe the decisions should be made, what are the business needs and how we're going to be addressing those business needs. I appreciate the perspective, that perhaps this could be foundational Public Health, and foundational Public Health has a lot of money. But I don't think that should be a justification as to why this position should be funded. I think the, the decision, why the position should be funded by, or will be, what are the business needs? And I do believe there is a business need. I do believe there is a delta. I do believe that it needs support. The question is, do we need the support out from Public Health on the project or in perpetuity? And, and my assessment, with all due respect, I think there is a need for the project, for the project implementation. And whether the, the need continues on after the project and the application is implemented, I think that may be a further discussion down the block.
Go ahead, Commissioner Mansour, I've been kind of hogging up the time. You sure?
No.
Okay, my, I feel like, I, I don't know. I'm still, I, I, I think we've gone around kind of my question not really, like, why can't, right, you're, you're saying you're a business applicant, or I'm not sure what the business analyst, your IT person is helping CPED with this business, with the Amanda replacement? Why can't that person also, you know, if, if, you know, why can't Public Health pay half of, you know, that position and receive that same support? What I'm struggling to see is, why bring two different IT applicants to be working on one same system? And I understand two different needs, but still, it's like, how are we going to get, you know, we're talking about alignment, we're talking about coordination. But if we're having two business applicants in there, I'm, I'm struggling to see how that fits instead of just having one person. And I, that's what I'm struggling to kind of see.
It's what is the full-time workload of two people?
So I appreciate the question. Really, it's an IT resource allocation question that we, we can't answer. We, I know that we've got a business analyst that knows the land use systems, that is an IT, but I'm not sure why, to answer your question, I don't have that.
And, and my understanding, and we've talked with Dennis and we've talked amongst ourselves, is there is not additional resources to be able to come in and do the, the lift that we're talking about for at least the Public Health piece because of the number of systems in the workload for the Public Health piece. And one of the reference checks, we did reference checks with other jurisdictions, IT actually did this, through this implementation process for this new permitting system. They said those that didn't configure appropriately and did not fund the process were delayed one to four years from the original timeline and found themselves having to make changes to the configuration. In other words, if we go on the, the cheat now, it's going to impact the ability to get this system up and running and appropriately to serve the public.
That configuration, go ahead, sorry.
If the ERP is any indication, implementing a large new system is a huge lift. And I would agree that extra staff to implement the project is critical. It's the need for the ongoing FTE that I don't think we've got anywhere.
If, if we, if we, if, yeah, thank you. If we, if we use as a parallel to the, the, the system is, is what I call is a new house. That's my analogy, a new house. And within the house, there is many different rooms, and each room has connections. And the business analyst is the one who actually goes through the process and making sure those rooms are located on the right space, encountered by connections. And I think what Josh and Kurt are saying, I believe, is, Josh, a business analyst, understands what rooms are needed to work with the CPED permitting process. And there is not, and, and there is not enough capacity to look at the second floor of this house to see layout what the rooms Public Health needs and find the right connections.
My whole thing is, you don't hire two contractors for one house.
No, but you have, but you know, they, they, but they may, but they, no, but they may, but they may, but you know, if, if we use the analogy, the main contractor is the software provider.
So I, this is a pretty awesome analogy. I can't help, I'm thinking about this because that's, gets right down to the nuts and bolts of why the IT contract with the vendor is taking so long is because the vendor is saying, we want you, county, to do at least 30% of the work inside the house. The drywall, the electrical, the plumbing. And we're saying, no, we've gone down that path of the last one where we did a lot of the configuration. And the vendor said, you've over-modified it, and now we can't support you anymore. And so we're trying to push back against having us do the work inside the house and asking the vendor, you should be drywalling, you should be doing the electrical. And that's really the rub between our IT department and the selected vendor. And so I think what Kurt, I think that's a great analogy in terms of the project position to help get the structure built so that we can actually live in the house.
And, and because, to use the analogy further, you don't want the house ready to go with electricity, plumbing, drywall, and then find out that something essential was left out and that because Public Health is behind the curve because we don't have the resources or the support.
I think an IT conversation would be helpful.
Yeah, so, and this, this more, this is for you to, you know, get information when the decision-making process comes to a point.
But we extend the ending dates all the time on positions.
So that goes back to my recommendation, when the board considers this position, perhaps you consider a project position with endings.
And, and I don't disagree whatsoever. I will say however, that right now, IT is very rough market for FTEs to fill positions. And something with an end date coming right up will, will make it even harder to fill.
Maybe a two, two-year end date.
Yeah, at least two years.
I was, I was going to suggest 2025. And the reason I say that is because we're looking at not only putting the system in place, as Josh has already literally pushed it back, we were just hoping to have it stood up by 2023. Now that's slipped back a little bit. We need to have the ability not only to get it stood up, but also to
but also to uh understand as it is implemented, the first at least six to nine months to see and get the bugs worked out of it. So I think there's a need there to go into twenty twenty five.
Art, you you wanted to say something?
Yes, go ahead, Art.
Well, thank you, um, I was just going to reiterate some of the points that Kurt and others have made. Um, and actually, Don Peebles has worked a lot on this along with Steve Peterson and others. But and as Kurt indicated, uh, they've they've said you really do need to dedicate a person to work on this sort of stuff for each of the key departments and maybe Public Works doesn't need that, but we certainly do. And our experience with Amanda was that when you, if you didn't do that properly and it's uh our reference checks have shown that if you don't do it proper.
Oh, there's a technology.
All right. All right.
Do I get to jump in?
Yes.
Because Art quit. Okay, so we've got what, uh, me and this Eden, Questica and Amanda, uh, I don't know what all you're trying to put together. But I've been hearing about Amanda for the last four years at least. And we never seem to get there. I'm curious, are we going to have E inspections up and running properly shortly?
We we have E inspections up and running with the technology that we have.
Yeah.
And the answer to your question is, whenever we are able to secure this contract, that'll be part of the configurations. And again.
And that'll expedite everything and and you don't know how much that will expedite everything when we get that in place.
Because using.
E inspections, online applications.
Right, yeah, you you using using the house analogy, right now the E inspections is a shed. Is it isn't existent, it's working. What we need to do is bring all those operations inside the house so we can work cohesively with the rest of the business.
And we're and we're out there advertising it, we've done outreach, people aren't going out to the shed a lot.
And you know what that causes a lot of delays.
But it's there, it's available and when people use it, it's quick, but.
Okay, that's all I wondered about.
When people use it, it's quick, but people aren't using it. We've advertised it.
That's true.
Yeah, yeah, so we we do need to move to other parts, so.
You need direction from uh.
No, not yet.
No, no, this is all informational as you think about whether or not you want to.
A little, uh, when the decisions are come, I will remind you of this conversation.
Appreciate the support.
Let me take you back.
Okay, Kurt, now you're in the hot seat.
No, we, that was, you know, that was Art's only, no, it's not his only item, but hopefully he'll return.
I wonder if the rest of your team is clear, is no.
Yeah, they're there, I I I forgot Art's in Lubbock at a conference and so he's at the mercy of the uh.
Justice.
Yeah.
So we're, we left off with.
There's iPhone and second generation.
That's probably, that's probably Art's trying to get back to.
I don't recognize it.
So we left off with I B fifty nine.
That's probably Art's.
Robin.
Right.
Are we going to be going through those as we're discussing?
Not not this afternoon, but but these are the things that Kurt's going to be talking about.
Okay.
So take it, take it away and talk about your request for foundational public health.
Okay, um, hold on just a second.
And and be mindful of the time because we do want to get through all of them.
Okay, so uh foundational public health, I know there's a discussion on that. Um, the foundational public health, we are essentially working off of a foundational public health uh with the state providing foundational public health to uh local health jurisdictions. And the funding came in um uh this last year and I remember uh and Commissioner Media and Commissioner Edward, you remember the foundational public health discussion last fall where we had one point four million dollars. The state added to that dollar amount uh on starting July first to the tune of one point two somewhat million dollars, a total of two points, uh, two million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's where we are with foundational public health. We have a number of positions that are coming forward with foundational public health um that we're requesting because of this new um uh uh funding that's come in. And foundational public health is designed to put services on the street to the to the community. And that's the intent for foundational public health. And it's also designed to have the uh, the uh, what's the word I'm looking for? To fund uh services that aren't, that is not done anywhere else. And I always like to use vaccination as an example. If we're going to educate the public on vaccine and the reason and and why they should get vaccinated, that's eligible for foundational public health. If we're going to do coordination for actually a vaccine clinic and we actually put needles in arms, that's not eligible for foundational public health because uh other providers, other healthcare providers do vaccination. So that's the best analogy I can give for what's eligible for foundational public health and what's not eligible for foundational public health.
Can I ask you how much was received from foundational public health?
This total this year, we have starting July first, two million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for foundational public health. Um, I know my, and now that's state fiscal year and this is part of our our, I don't know, Robin understands.
Dilemma. Dilemma.
Dilemma. State fiscal year runs July first to June thirtieth. So we have for the state fiscal year twenty twenty three, two million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for foundational public health. We are on, uh, as you know, January first to December thirty first. So we are actually walking through parts of the state fiscal year of of now. We had foundational public health at the beginning of this year, but that's state fiscal year twenty twenty two. We are in now state fiscal year twenty twenty three. That will go through next year to through June thirtieth and then we enter the next state fiscal year. So we have elements between this year and next year of three different state fiscal years. So that, so when state, the state Department of Health gives us funding, they put it on their fiscal year and yet we have to convert it and and do an estimate on what we're going to spend in our fiscal year. Go ahead, you look like you have a question.
I do.
Sure.
Um, how long will this, I mean, I understand it lasts, but like, are we going to be receiving two point six million every state fiscal year from now until continuity? Is there?
That's the base.
An expiration?
Yes, it is.
I said, it's gonna keep going up.
And it's gonna, and and here's the next part, yes, we are going to receive the same two point six million next July first and then they're going to increase it. And so by the law, the the state law that was passed for foundational public health, there is no end date. Now, what they will tell you is in twenty twenty five, it will stop increasing more than like, uh, at at least let me rephrase that, that's the last increase that we see, but the funding continues. So and there is nothing that turns off or sunsets the funding. However, it doesn't prevent the legislature from increasing.
Thank you, yeah, I think that's exactly what I was about.
No, no.
So so the plan steps in at that point, but nothing says they can't.
So then.
We can increase more.
They can, they can always take money away, but at this point, they are, they have committed.
Oh, well, sure.
Based on the current law, there is there is a base of this two point six million dollars a year with the likelihood that will be increasing in the next couple of years and that will plateau.
Right.
But I think I'd like to emphasize what really Kurt is stating is 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 also a matter of timing. Because one of the conditions of this foundational public health is you cannot carry over
Right.
the money from one year to another. So in this year, uh, I appreciate Kurt being very proactive to make sure that we didn't leave any money on the table come January, uh, June thirty two thousand and twenty two. So but the same, the constructions that we have is going to be the same moving into next year with more money than we had from one point four to two point five now. And and so let me take you back a couple of weeks when Kurt came with his team to provide you a briefing related to the to the foundational public health where he highlighted that particular constraint. And uh and and I believe the conversation led there perhaps. We need to bring additional positions as soon as possible for the board to approve this year in order for us to continue to spend the money and provide the services in order not to have raised, uh, get the possibility of leaving any money on the table because we are not going to be leaving any money on the table.
And and in your packet is the financial plan for Fund fifteen hundred, that's the public health fund, where you see a growing fund balance, um, that uh, you know, eventually you need to figure out how to spend some of this money.
When when you say the board, you mean the Board of County Commissioners or the new Board of Health?
No, the Board of Health has a capital authority for this.
To spend.
It's just.
No, it's spending is up to you, but it leaves a notice.
Okay.
So.
But do we get a recommendation through the Board of Public Health?
Yes, yes, it's a nice chunk of change, yeah.
So. So here's, that that dovetails into part of our discussion.
Okay, that's because I thought there was a.
So, um, so previously, the Board of Health and the Board of County Commissioners really, when you were, when you were appropriating funding, you were, you knew what you're appropriating for because you're the Board of Health at the same time. However, now, what we're starting is we have a chunk of this money is going to go in front of the new Board of Health for recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners because the Board of Health can only make policy recommendations, but they cannot make um budgetary.
Kind of like the EMS council.
Exactly, and that's what I was going to say is, so there's a chunk of money that's going forward that we're going to put in front of the new Board of Health for policy recommendation. And we'll bring forward a straw man, we'll bring forward, you know, what the staff has for some options. But at the same time, when we go into budget development for the biennial budget next spring, I hate to say that because I know it's so close. But what we're going to do is, we're going to take the public health biennial budget in front of the Board of Health for a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, similar to how we do for EMS council. That's a great analogy because that's what I'm using as a model.
So when those recommendations come to the Board of County Commissioners, you you perhaps you would be thinking, why is the Board of Health thinking?
Which will be upset in the deliberations when you thought about that.
Yeah, so a lot of money coming in, it is very much Kurt has uh um, mentioned the position request, Kurt and Romero both talked about that. It's tied to all this public foundational public health money coming in.
So we're in a position to finding a way to spend the money.
And.
Right.
What a tough situation.
And and the, yeah, so so here's the woo-hoo, we got a ton of money coming.
But what a difficult situation to be.
It's not general health money, it's general fund money, it's public health money. But this this is one of those few times you're going to see something like.
So the other piece is is this is positions to provide services to the public. In other words, you know, we talk about community health nurses, we talk about education and outreach specialists, we talk about all these different positions that are funded with foundational public health money that's coming in this year. We also, and I don't want to, I don't want to say all the positions are this way, uh, there's a, um, is Tom on the call, he's gonna, he's gonna get me because I'm not, I'm I'm drawing a blank, but there's a position for Tom's group as well, is housing. So we have some, we have support for housing funding coming in this year as well, so. But when we look at all this, it is not money that's going away or one time funding. It is uh sustainable as we go through and we're providing services to the public, to the personnel industry.
So we thought we had the the housing financial plan in your packet, it is, um, somehow we got two copies of fifteen.
The board, the board will, the board will come in the subject, I gotta channel Commissioner Messer. Uh, channel him a little bit. And last year, when we were, the board was discussing the foundational public health, went to the Y board and the board had the opportunity to uh assign funding to specific programs. I believe it's the same expectation this year, so at some point we need to embed that conversation with the board when the board makes final decisions to give the board the opportunity to go through the Y board test analogy and see where those programs they like to emphasize in terms of priorities.
That will be for part of the last week of our.
Right, so that's what I said, I don't want, I don't want that to be forgotten.
All right.
But but when we do that, I guess my question is, is that for the Board of Health to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners because you're making recommendations on what policies should go? Or is that for the Board of County Commissioners?
You don't have enough time to have your new Board of Health go through that.
Yeah, because it's going to be pretty tight and the next, I think, because the board will make funding decisions by the last week in October.
Okay, and.
We only have a meeting.
I know, I I. I'm I'm asking the question because I think the question may get asked down the road and so I I.
No, down the road, I think next year, they they they, what you let laid out a strategy and the plan, I think is on point. But this year, I don't think we're going to be able to have that interaction.
And and part of it is is that we have also, when they gave us the the funding, they have certain buckets, the funding's already in. So, you know, we, I think we start with that and we break it down and then Board of County Commissioners can can go from there.
Right. Right.
And as you said, the last week of October.
So you and I and maybe Romero can uh work on what that next schedule look like.
Yes, right, right. But I just want to make sure because that was, I believe, I requested.
Yeah, that's coming. Um, so uh Nicole just handed out the housing plan, uh, sorry, that that was not already in your packet. And what you see again, uh, reflecting the conversation that you recently had with Kurt and the public health team, um, there has been a ton of money coming in. You see the revenue line for intergovernmental revenues that just went way up in twenty twenty one and twenty two. We expect that to start coming back down rather rapidly. Um, and so the expenditures will also drop. But this um fund also has a substantial fund balance. So there's a little room in the housing fund to do some things. And Kurt, are any of the requests in the budget about housing?
Yes, yes, um, so we have, we're asking number one, uh, for a removal of a uh, the word term limit comes to my mind.
End dates.
Yeah, thank you, end dates.
Uh, what was it?
End date.
Oh, end date.
Taking the end dates off.
So take the end dates off so that we can turn around and um go with that for uh, uh, because we we see the need, the work's going to be there, the work's going to stay, but also for staff retention and staff recruitment, uh, the end dates are to make it more challenging to retain staff and also to recruit.
So what request number is this?
That one.
These are.
This is related to the regional housing council conversation with staffing uh needs.
Are you talking about ending or extending?
Extending, ending, ending the end date, so we.
M forty three.
You're extending the end date, not ending, ending or extending?
Eliminating the end date.
Removing, removing the end date, completely taking.
Okay, okay, that's what I was going.
Thank you.
Is this number seventy two?
I have no idea what this is, it's M forty thirty three.
Line seventy and yes, seventy.
Yeah, it's uh remove end dates for physical staff, um.
So it's line seventy. And then also remove the end date for housing, social services one.
Right.
And no dollars.
That's a, that's under forty.
At seventy two, and I don't know why there's no dollars.
There's no dollar amount because the end dates are currently the end of twenty twenty three,
Three.
which is already included in the budget, so they want to remove the end date so the fiscal impact will be next biennial.
But but we also don't have, we retain the staff because we don't want the staff to start looking for a new job next year because.
You got that somewhere else, listed somewhere else this time.
Of the the forty one thirty six is the end date for the housing and social services one position.
Yep.
Oh, down here on the bottom.
Yep, that's line seventy two.
I, I'm just looking at my notes.
No, I got it, it's on the bottom.
Okay.
It look in different report, that's.
They've they've, they have the M forty one thirty six, but they're also.
You're a little lost.
Sometimes you're looking at four things all the time.
Yeah.
Keep you guys on your toes.
So there is, as you can see, a ton of money in, not a ton of money, but a substantial amount of money in the housing fund also. So, um, and Kurt, remind me, or maybe Robin will help us, um, does the forecast include the budget requests?
I I don't know, Robin, Redu, uh, can you answer that question whether or Corinne, whether the forecasts uh include the budget request?
Because it goes from two point nine in salaries to, I'm sorry, um.
Robin.
Hi, this is, this is Corinne, yes, it does include.
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
So these financial plans assume that the board says yes to all of the proposed budget adjustments.
I I guess my question to you, I guess, why not?
There there's no reason to why not that I can think of at this time.
So when when you review this this item tomorrow at noon, then you can probably put a high.
Yeah. High, high, high.
So for for which one is this?
For these are on the public, all of the public health requests coming out of Fund fourteen hundred and Fund fifteen hundred.
I have a different opinion about that.
Well, I just hate to send, I just don't want to send money back.
Right, that's exactly right.
I mean, that's my biggest.
You can spend all this and you'll still have some money to work with.
Right, and not only that, but it's it's directly providing those services for the community, so that's that's the key point of work.
Right, anything else about housing?
You have a very touch base on the positions from us.
Yeah, very touch base on the positions, uh, treatment.
Yeah. Let's talk about treatment sales cap.
So, um, I know Carrie, are you still on the call?
So Costa heads up, uh, number seventy and seventy two do not have which fund?
I see that they don't have the fund numbers provided, um, and we'll we'll fix that, yes.
And that's again because the impact isn't this year, but. And that's again because the impact isn't this year, but we need to get that information.
Yep.
Okay. So, treatment sales tax, uh, the questions
Fund number eleven eighty.
Okay. Which page is that?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thanks, Carrie. Um, so treatment sales tax, uh, I guess the, the, what were the questions that the Commissioners had for?
Um, so, so it's just the, they want to look at the state of the fund mainly, um, uh, because this fund is the fund that we can never seem to spend.
And, and that's, and I'll start off, Carrie, and then I'll, and I'll let you jump in and fill in the gaps, but, uh, the, the, the challenge is, we, we, we contract out every fiscal year for the fund, for the appropriation that the Commissioners provide. Um, and what ends up happening is, is one, it's always seems to be that we collect more revenue, I shouldn't say always, but it seems to me at least, historically, we collect more revenue than, than what we project, which is not a bad thing overall, but it does intend to bring the fund balance up. And the second piece is, is our contractors, uh, who, who are putting projects in place and, and execute these contracts, um, typically are at a, at an eighty-five to ninety percent execution rate, correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie, and so therefore that's, we have to ensure that we, um, have enough, um, budget authority for what we put in place, but they tend to underspend. Is that a fair assessment, Carrie?
Yes, uh, Carrie Henin, Treatment Sales Tax Program Manager, good afternoon, everybody. Yes, that is a good assessment, and you can kind of see how that plays out on the financial plan we added. I'm not sure this is on all your other plans, we added the lines, the rows, uh, about half or two-thirds of the way down the page, yes, uh, showing reversion, so you can show, I know, um, you know, I think your general fund reversion rate is maybe three percent or something, but in treatment sales tax, it's been ten to even as high as twenty percent last year, and you can see we continue to project out reversion in the future. We don't think it'll be as high as twenty percent, but, um, showing, you know, continued, likely continued underspending in the future, and that's left us with a seven point four million dollar beginning fund balance this year in twenty twenty-two, which you can see kind of at the middle, at the top. Um, but because we are, we're still budgeting to spend a lot more than we believe we will take in, and even with reversion, we, you know, we are modeling and planning, as we always have, to spend down the fund balance. And to Robin's previous question, this financial plan does assume for twenty twenty-three that all of the, oh, there's not very many, but all of the change requests are approved by the Commissioners, but that we do continue to see this underspending.
So, so line sixty-nine in your policy request packet, uh, and the change request number is M four oh two nine, is from the Treatment Sales Tax Fund. Uh, it is to, um, have additional funding for the, um, BHASO. Uh, and Carrie, could you talk a little bit about what that request is all about?
Sure, yes, so the, uh, BHASO has received for several years now external funding uh, that we've referred to as True Blood Funds, um, from a, a different funder that has supported a team in our jail that supports, um, people whose competency to stand trial is, is questioned, and this relates to lawsuits against the state about how long those, um, competency proceedings tend to take. That has supported the team of, um, five FTEs, and the BHASO had expected that they would be able, that, that those external funds would continue through twenty twenty-three, and they would maybe come back, uh, with a request in twenty twenty-four, but they more recently learned that, um, their True Blood Funds are ending. They can, can, they can sustain the team they have through underspending and other fund sources this year in twenty twenty-two, but this is a request to basically backfill most, though not all, of that external True Blood funding starting January twenty twenty-three, so the request is for about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to support a mental health professional supervisor, a mental health professional, and a peer. That is still a loss compared to what they have now supported with that external True Blood funding of two FTEs, but the BHASO, um, and the Sheriff's Office have talked about this and feel that this sort of, they can maintain their critical services and critical functions, so, um, the Sheriff's Office has been consulted, the TST Advisory Committee has been consulted, and kind of support all around for moving forward, recommending to you all to move forward with this.
Thank you, Carrie.
I have a question in regards to the budget. Um, I'm seeing towards the future, right, that we're spending down, which I guess that's the goal, to be spending it down. In twenty twenty-six, we get to two point six million, and my question is, for this budget, do we need to have, you know, a limit that we need kind of for
Roughly two million dollars would be a, a great ending fund balance in this one.
So then, like, twenty twenty-six would be kind of like the ideal of where we would want to be.
You're getting close to it. Yep.
My question is for maybe twenty twenty-seven and onward, on, you know, we're seeing this kind of de-escalation, we're spending more than what we have. What's, way, speaking way into the future, but how are we gonna pivot from that amount of spending to not? So we don't reduce the budget to that point?
I think that if you, um, actually are able to get, uh, spending happening, get down to this, uh, cash flow balance here, um, that at that point, you start to look at, uh, what money is going out the door for what purposes. Um, and you would at that time need to start to make some real priorities about how to use this money. But one of the things that we have greatly expanded is the community grants. Um, how much are they now, Carrie? Did we just do four million dollars?
Oh, not that much, uh, we have a couple different sets on a couple different timelines, I'm gonna say roughly eight hundred thousand dollars, I, I could get back to you with a better answer.
Eight hundred thousand, is that all?
Um, well, that's a lot more than it used to be, as you know.
Yeah, it used to be a hundred thousand, I mean, we greatly expanded that program. Um, because we had so much money that kept getting left on the table. Then you start to look at, um, any of the offices and departments that have a piece of this money that are perhaps overfunded. Um, the, the reason for these high reversion rates is not only the community contracts, but in very large part, that our offices, it's all internal. Um, so, then you start to scrub those. Uh, if you actually do get down to a two-month ending fund balance, um, and those two items don't get you into equilibrium, then you'll have to start thinking about what do you really wanna use the money on.
Yeah, the reversion, the reversion of twelve, ten, ten percent is extremely conservative. So I'm gonna go on a limb, uh, here, uh, when we have seen, I've seen the ten-year financial plan of the TST for, for the last few years. Always the last year seems to be going to the very minimum. And as, as the next year progresses, the end, the, the last year continues to be moved. So the goalpost continues to be moved, and it's really reflected on, on the, on the high reversion of, of, of what it is, because if everything was, uh, they, it was funded, was spent, I mean, it will be a difficult conversation for the board to help raise.
But, but also, I would throw out twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty, because those are, those are COVID years, and, and any data during COVID years is gonna be very challenging to incorporate in as, 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 as the norm.
Yeah, that's for every fund, that's true of every single fund. So, when I'm looking for alternative ways to fund things, this is one of the funds that I look at. Can we use TST? Because this fund tends to happen. Let's, let's, uh, move on.
Can I share, Everett, do you have a question?
Oh, yeah.
Has anybody had a conversation about this with Commissioner Mensah at all, or is he just gonna depend on reviewing this?
He'll, he'll, he'll be reviewing, and I will try to give, uh, feedback to him, uh, as, as a liability.
Right, and if he has any questions about this, we can certainly make sure we follow up on those.
And
I mean, I don't think, I don't think he will, just out of courtesy, so I'm on that board with him, so.
I was gonna say, all, staff are always available, if, for all three Commissioners, if you have questions, we can, we'll be happy to provide any information you need. Um, but you were gonna say, Robin, remove one to Veterans Fund, because I, so I know Mark Moffitt's on the call, um, because the last, I wanna say August and September, and maybe I got my, my months off a little bit, but we've seen an uptick in veterans re-providing services for it. I was gonna let Mark talk a little bit about that, and then a pilot, uh, project that I think Robin and Mark and I are really excited about for veterans as well, so, uh, Mark, are you still on the call?
I, I am.
Okay, and Mark's a little into the weather, so, so please, uh, throw me the hard questions, and not necessarily Mark.
We'll back you up.
I appreciate it, um, I can, excuse me, I can give you a, a few numbers from the last three years, um, and what the Veterans Assistance Fund has been, um, putting out. So in twenty twenty, um, we, we spent about twenty-eight thousand, just over twenty-eight thousand on direct services to veterans. Um, that's, uh, utility, rent, um, and, and some car payments. And in that year, we helped about twenty-six veterans. Last year, we increased that by almost double to fifty-two thousand, um, and we helped twenty-one vets. Uh, this year, um, through the three quarters, uh, we have, uh, put out about eighty-nine thousand dollars in, just in direct services to the veteran, and we've helped out about a hun, uh, forty-three veterans, uh, and we still have a quarter to go. The last two months have been, um, really busy, uh, for some reason, August and September, we've had a lot of veterans coming in, um, and it's been great, uh, we're trying to keep up with it, and we, we haven't had to turn, I don't think we've turned, had to turn anybody away, um, so it's, it's been, it's been great to see that. Any questions on numbers?
Nope. Okay.
I don't think so yet.
Okay, and I was just gonna say, but, but the uptick in numbers and the number of veterans we're able to help is, is a, a great sign, I believe, and so, um, but I just wanted to emphasize that, that, uh, Mark and his staff are working real hard, uh, both outreach as well, and also at the Veterans Hub.
Yep.
Or, you've got that thing I mentioned to you this afternoon, is that gonna fit somewhere here later?
Later.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
So, so
So the, the fund number for the Veterans Fund is twelve hundred, that is in your packet?
Oh, I got that.
So you can see how much money this fund has available.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Romero.
So, uh, the, the numbers that you just stated, Mark, um, in terms of the services, um, I don't see that expenditure that you stated in terms of increasing services on the financial plan.
First
I'm looking, there's two line items, um, it is just, uh, one line item is services. In services, in two thousand nineteen was a hundred thirty thousand. In twenty twenty was forty-two, uh, understandably why, then on twenty twenty-one was ninety-eight thousand. Is that embedded on what you stated, in that line item?
Yes, the, the numbers I stated are inside those, so what
Okay, got it.
Inside that two hundred and three thousand.
And then in two thousand and two, we expect to spend overall in all the services, two hundred and three thousand.
Yeah.
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah, that line, that line includes, um, other things, not just direct services, I was just, I just wanna let you know what was going straight to the veteran.
Can you, can you go, can you talk a little bit more about what the services are?
Um, sure, it, so the direct, well, direct services, as I said, um, um, uh, rent assistance, utilities, those are our big ones, burial, um, and that makes up the, the majority of what goes straight to the veterans. And then services, I believe, under that is going to also be, um, money to the hub to keep that going, so we can, so we can get, you know, in, uh, a complete service to the veterans, um, and that's what the hub's about, is about making sure there's a holistic approach to helping the veteran, there's a lot of different services going on, and they're not just us. Great that we're embedded there, so that the, that the veteran doesn't have to go there, and then come over to Lily Road or, or somewhere else to, to work with us. Um, so that's another one that's in the services, and then I think in there also will be, um, shelter services. So, right now, we're only contracted with Catholic Community Services to, to provide shelter, bed nights for veterans or their families only. And they still have to meet the majority of the, uh, of the requirements to get into the Veterans Assistance Program. Um, the only, uh, they have to, they have to be, uh, eligible veteran, um, but, um, as far as income, we, we don't check their incomes, many times they don't have that information, and then if they need a DD two fourteen, and, and we talked in the past, uh, we, we help them, uh, find that.
Okay, and, uh, so the increase in two thousand twenty-three in services to five hundred and eighty-three thousand, that is related to the
That is the new pilot program that we're proposing.
Right, so, so Mark, why don't you talk a little bit about the new pilot program?
Okay, sure, so, so this, this, uh, program is, is intended to help with food insecurity with veterans. Uh, something that we've been lacking in the last few years is being able to provide food for veterans. We, we do have, um, we do have, uh, a, a food pantry at the, at the Lacey Veterans Hub, and then we can also send them to other food pantries, but, um, we haven't been able to partner with local grocery stores because it's very difficult for, to get a voucher, and then to ensure that they aren't buying alcohol or tobacco products. We wanted to concentrate on the food. So what this, this company that, um, that actually, uh, Robin introduced me to, Bento, what they do is, we, we will, we will qualify the veteran, make sure they're a veteran, um, income status, um, and then we send the information to Bento, and they'll communicate with the veteran through text messaging to find them food. So, um, local restaurants, they can, they can go, they can pick whatever restaurant they want, uh, within their area, they have to go pick it up, um, and, and they have up to, I think, fifteen meals is how we're setting up each month, that they can do this. And then also, um, they, they work with the local grocery stores, and then they can pick out the food that they want, and, um, then it'll be delivered to their home. And so, so, one of the other benefits of this is, there isn't any, uh, stigma attached to it, when they go into, you know, if it's Subway or wherever they're going to get their meal, it's not that this is Thurston County money, it's, this is John, and he's here to pick up his food. So there's, there isn't that, um, there isn't that stigma attached to, to, as it is to some other type of programs. Um, and then during this time, we're also making sure that they're set up with SNAP and WIC if, if it's available for them. Uh, so we wanna make sure that we set, we're setting them up with other type of, uh, services as well.
So part of, yeah, go ahead.
No, is there anything I'm, I'm missing on that, uh, Robin?
I was just gonna say, part of the Bento program is, uh, not only are you addressing food insecurity, um, but you're also connected with case management. And the case management, um, provides the veterans with connections, so like Mark was saying, uh, connection to qualify for SNAP or WIC, or, you know, what other services? Do they, are they receiving their veterans' benefits? How can we assist them in getting those? So that after a period of time, um, the goal is that the person receiving this service graduates off in a better situation than they were in when they started.
Wraparound.
Um, it's, it is a wraparound type of, of, of program. So it's really, uh, exciting, it's, it's, uh, brand new, um, it's not being done in other counties, is our understanding. Um, and another element of this is that if, if there are any dietary needs, like, um, Bento has a partnership with American Diabetes Association, the food that they would receive is curated to be healthy and, uh, in line with their dietary needs. So, it's got a lot of interesting application capabilities.
Thank you, Robin, and, and so when you see the increase from twenty-two to twenty-three, that would, um, there, it's, it's gonna, it's three hundred and ten thousand, we're investing in this. Uh, ten thousand dollars is a startup fee, uh, with Bento, and then sixty thousand for the year for case management of up to a hundred veterans. Um, and we plan on, um, going through the hub, signing up, because we get a lot of veterans through the hub, um, signing them up through there, and then also over at Catholic Community Services, uh, wherever we can find veterans that are in need of, of this type of service.
And, and the other piece is, all the veteran needs, other than ensuring their DD two fourteen, if they qualify as a cell phone, and as we found out, and, and studies have shown, they have their cell phone, they keep their cell phone, and so, therefore, they have the ability to get this food, and, and again, um, addressing the, uh, food insecurity issues with veterans. um addressing the uh food insecurity issues with veterans.
Is this B E N T O E, like Bento?
B E N T O, Bento.
B E N T O.
That's that's the company.
B, B is in boy.
B is in boy, Bento.
Okay. Um I guess while Mark's on the line here, do you know anything about, was it, uh yesterday, a gentleman said that he was didn't have a consecutive six-month period, so he didn't apply.
Sure, that's, yeah.
So the challenge on that is is that uh that's active duty, and so when he's deployed uh on temporary duty, he was on, I think he said in Alabama, temporary duty, but.
Maybe TDY or something.
Yeah, exactly, TDY, but uh so temporary duty is TDY, and um that stops apparently under the, and I ha- I don't have the details, and I think we have to go to the assessor's office to find the details, but I'm just staying on.
Oh, we we have a little more.
Okay.
Yeah, we, so uh what he was saying is um there is uh he doesn't qualify for uh a break on their property taxes.
Okay, interesting, yeah.
Because he he, there is two pieces of qualifying for that, you need to meet an income level, which he does, I believe, as a veteran.
Yeah, he's saying, yeah.
And also you have to remain in the residence for six months.
Six months out of the assessment year.
Six months out of the assessment year, what I need to have a conversation, he stated yesterday, perhaps he didn't qualify for the six months, because from what he was, has been told is consecutive.
That's a month or so.
Months, so that is the cut, they could, they they question that I need to ask to be accepted.
Oh, okay, we don't have an answer yet.
Okay, good, no, that is.
We just received a coming history confirmation.
We did take a look, though, uh it is a state law in the WAC. Um so it's not something that Thurston County put in place, but it does not, the WAC does not say consecutive months, so.
Consecutive, definitely, word consecutive is missing on Mr. That's all, I I need to connect with that.
Yeah, so we have to be assessed.
And I may not have the answer for next Tuesday, but I'm working on it.
Back to you. Oh, yeah, 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 I don't.
Yeah. Just in the expectations, Commissioner.
So for this, my question is um in terms of the food insecurity, right, how many veterans are we coming through, right, and and saying like I need to be connected with the food bank, do we have a number of a possible estimate of how many, right, just because of people who have been coming through, do we have numbers of of the possibility of people who would be using uh these services?
Uh Commissioner, I do not have that number, um as far as uh the those that come through the Veterans Hub, that would be something that uh Keith Looker would have. Uh he knows who comes through them specifically. Um and then Ashley, who who runs the um the Veteran Assistance Programs uh directly, she would know, but what we, when somebody typically asks for food, we try to redirect and and help them in another area, so that since we we don't have this food avenue, um we try to help them with something else, so so they can purchase the food.
And then we, though Mark, we had had, Thurston County had had the ability to help with food in the past. We had to stop, so approximately, do you have any idea how many veterans we were uh giving food cards to, or however we were doing that in the past?
Um we're talking probably about twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Um I would say in a year, uh maybe thirty, uh just looking at prior records, but that's just off the top of my head, I can I can certainly look that up.
We we think we could easily find a hundred vets that need this service.
My second question's in terms of um our Veterans Advisory Board, have they reviewed this already?
They have they have not, we're we're presenting it, well, there's a couple of things that are are sticking points for me, and that's, the big thing is the exit strategy. What do we do, um you know, to to make sure that someone doesn't have to stay on this all the time? Our veteran population is a little bit different than, you know, somebody else that's just struggling right now. Uh they may be, you know, uh disabled or older or and and their their situation isn't going to improve, so this is something that they would need you know, continuously, so we wanna figure out what's what's a good exit strategy, just in case, you know, we do this for a year um and we don't have it the following year, we don't wanna just leave somebody in a hole, so um that's one of the things that we're trying to uh develop and take it to the uh the uh the uh the board.
Right, and the other piece is is the uh with the case management also, their their um process is to help the the goal is to get the veterans off of this food insecurity program, and to be able to stand on their own and be at least self-sufficient, and so that's the whole process also that's tied in with the case management.
Right. Can I, I I'm gonna go ahead and request a work session, because I I think just for Commissioner Mensah as well to be involved in this conversation, but maybe kind of like an update on how, you know, the previous uh pilot project with the one veteran who would be um given rent assistance, I wanna kind of, maybe an update on that. And then also, maybe once um Mark has presented this to the Veterans Advisory Board, uh maybe another presentation on this, so um if we can schedule a a work session with kind of those updates, I think would be um good for all of us to know, and I'm just wanna, are you okay with that, Commissioner?
I do have one more question.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh hey, Mark, when you've, when you run into a vet, he doesn't have his DD two fourteen, and I don't know, he doesn't have much of anything, maybe, how do you determine eligibility? Do you take, I mean, I'm told, you know, I was in the Army fifty-seven years ago, I can still remember my serial number, and I'm told that the person never forgets that. But maybe drugs make you forget, I don't know. Anyway, how do you do that? Do you uh verify maybe through a serial number and make sure that he is what he says?
So one thing we do, if if it if it if we have somebody that comes in that maybe hasn't been out of the Army as long as you have, Commissioner. So maybe temporary times, we 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 can actually go to uh the VA and and get that really quick, that information looked up really quick. Otherwise, we have to apply for it, so with, you know, there there are some services we can't offer unless we have confirmation, uh but we do the VA and uh the Washington DVA to to get that information as quickly as possible.
Okay, but there is a mechanism, maybe verify, okay, thank you.
Okay, all right.
If I may, real quick, on that on that Bento program, so I mentioned set ten thousand for startup, sixty thousand for the um the case management for the year, and then the other two hundred and fifty thousand, my math is bad. Um that's that's all about the food, so if we don't spend that much in the food, it doesn't get spent. So it's not given, it's it's not just disappears, we make sure that that's the money that goes to the food directly.
Okay, speeding down.
So um subject to your questions, um that was the list that we had for the board.
Okay, great.
And Friday, World uh World Series bound, Mariners playoff.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
You're gonna need a passport to go to Friday's game, no, I have.
Well, that that's not fair, because, you know, it's it's the only team in Canada who are we playing against. Is that is that the truth?
Yeah.
Uh huh.
Yeah, you're playing against a whole country.
Whole country, you're gonna see.
Taking on a whole country.
Okay, okay.
Might as well call the Canadian team.
So that is the budget presentation for today, we'll pick back up tomorrow at nine o'clock with the, starting with the sheriff. And um that's what we have for today.
Thank you, thank you, Mark, I hope you feel better, and oh, I see Art joined again.
Yeah, I wanna say thanks to all the staff, uh I appreciate your support, I know everybody's been pulling to get us all the information together for the commissioners. They're the smart ones.
Big connection over here, thanks, everybody.
Okay, three forty-nine PM, we are adjourned.